Uh, April ninth, twenty twenty four. Uh, county commissioners order with the pledge of allegiance, so please stand for the pledge. Item number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. Uh, we have one person signed in this morning, Mr. Rick Wyble. Please come forward.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you. Uh, such a beautiful morning. Um, Rick Wyble from the city of Elkton. And of course, I'm here to talk about elections and I am still requesting a bipartisan election performance improvement task force to look at the way that we conduct elections here in Brookings. One, I think we should look at vote centers. We have created uneven precincts. Last night I had just received a new voter roll from the Secretary of State's office. I just emailed last night the county auditor regarding the imbalances that I'm seeing across our various precincts. And so many of us are not properly represented. Um, with the sizes of our precincts, especially those of us in the Republican Party. We have some precinct committee men and women that represent only two hundred voters and others that represent seventeen hundred voters. So I think we need to redistribute the precincts for proper allocation and proper representation within our party side. I know it doesn't, it may impact some of the Democrats, but independents are not impacted by this at this point in time, but it is an issue regarding our state party. Then, the other thing is that we want to make sure that ballot images and cast vote records are turned on for all elections because under U.S. Code fifty-two, two oh seven, oh one, that is deemed an election record. And we have found out that some counties have not been preserving that. We're aware of a potential notice that ESNS has received from several states indicating that they're to turn it off, and that should not be happening at all. And in my view, for our state, that would be tampering with the automatic tabulating machine under twelve dash twenty-six dash twenty-three dot one. We need to make sure that that is on because that is supposed to be the equivalent of when we're hand counting that we see all of those records, and that's the standard since two thousand and five. I also recommend now that we're in a new post-election audit process, we're finally going to have our first year of it, don't just stick with the state minimum. You as a county commissioners, just like other counties, I recommend that we do a hundred percent post-election audit of all precincts, all ballots, all races to confirm that our machines are accurate. The good thing about this is that that is paid for by the Secretary of State's office under the statute twelve seventeen B nineteen. And so another thing is we've done it again. So in two thousand and twenty-two, the city council held an a meeting in this very room, which prevented the ability of our election workers to be able to use this room to prep for the election. And here we are today hosting a county meeting in reverse that's preventing the city from being able to set up their machines here to get ready for tabulation tonight. And so this is why I was requesting before that we probably need to create a state statute to prevent public meetings during elections because we said we were going to prevent it, but now we haven't. And so I would implore you to try to hold this meeting as fast as possible, maybe even adjourn it to allow the auditor and the city officials to be able to start prepping this room to process absentee ballots and then be able to start getting the machines in and getting things ready. Thank you so much.
Moving on, item number four is approval of the agenda. Do I have motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Have motion a second. Any comment? Labor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Agenda is approved. Uh, scheduled agenda item, public hearing, the action approve of special events license for J Street Pub to have motion approved.
Move approval.
Second.
Have motion a second. Uh, would now open a public hearing. Um, any proponents to this item? Please come forward.
Um, Andrea Diedrick, uh, we're looking to. Owl Lodge, um, by Oakwood State Park.
Any question? Any other proponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? And now close the public hearing. Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six, have a motion, a motion to adjourn.
Still move. Second.
Have motion to adjourn, a second. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion carried. We will now convene as a Brookings County Board of Equalization. Okay, we'll get started. Uh, item number nine is the appeals. Item A, discussion and possible action on Paul E. Morarity, appeal number one. The appellant's, please come forward.
Good morning, I'm Darla Vega, and I'm representing Paul Morarity this morning.
And good morning, I'm Michael Morarity, um, co-representing my uncle. I'm Paul Morarity's nephew, and I might also have some of my own properties that I am appealing here, so they're kind of intertwined. Um, I was kind of hoping that we could start off with, um, the trailer park property because it's different than all the other ones. Um, all the other ones are apartments are inare comparable. If you want to start off with the trailer park, it might make things a little bit simpler and then we don't have to go back and forth.
That would be number two on the agenda.
When you take action, I would take action in the order, but if you want to hear everything, same discussion for several of them. So I think you can kind of hear discussion on this one and then the rest and then, but then when you take action, take action in order of the agenda.
Just make sure that you identify which appeal number you're addressing.
If we stay in order, then which one are we on right now?
You can, you can start, the way I understand it, he can start with the trailer parks as, as you said, a lot of the is interrelated or the same. The whole thing, if something is different with number eleven, number twelve, go ahead and specify that, and then we'll approve them in order when we're done with discussions. Is that what I understand you'd like to do? Without objection, you can do that.
So basically with the trailer park, it's just kind of a general objection. Um, the, the property taxes on that particular property went up seven thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty cents. So little background, we, we did try to appeal back in twenty, last year for, for my uncle. He was sick in the hospital and we missed the technicality of a deadline by a few hours and we were not able to hear us. I don't know if you remember that, but Darla tried to hear us and you weren't able to hear us due to, um, the rules that it had to be held or heard by the, um, previous board. So anyways, we're back again as we were, um, recommended, suggested doing. Um, but basically this particular property, um, the values go, or the property taxes went up seven thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars. Um, and we're, we're going back to twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three values because that's, um, values jumped from twenty twenty, um, three to twenty, uh, actually twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, and they stayed the same from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So basically all of our comparisons go back to twenty twenty-two, which is, which we originally wanted to appeal. So that's what we're doing today. So in twenty twenty-two, the, the land value was, um, three hundred and sixty-two thousand. In twenty twenty-three and twenty-four, it was bumped up to four hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred. Um, they, they put some building values on there. I'm not really, uh, sure why that would be because personally, we don't own the buildings as far as I know, but, um, anyways, the twenty twenty-two values go from a hundred and one, a hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred to, uh, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, so there's a large, a very, um, large increase. Um, this property is located in the northwest corner of town. It's not in the city. Um, I did do some comparisons with, um, some trailer parks in the city. Um, they're being assessed at the same cost per acre, from what I could tell. And an argument that I would have is that, um, some land values that are further away from the city would have less value than lands right within the, the city. Um, the land values within the city should, 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 um, be more valuable. So basically, we're just appealing the drastic increase and maybe if Jacob could explain to me how the, how the assessed values could go from the twenty twenty-two values to twenty twenty-three, I'd appreciate that, but I just can't see how they could have increased like that.
Do you want Jacob to respond to that?
Yes. So this. Properties was part of a countywide reappraisal, um, that took place in twenty twenty-two to set the twenty twenty. And what we did at that time was we updated cost tables and correlated those new cost tables to five years' worth of history of sales within Brookings City, grouping properties as according to their use. Um, we were comparing mobile home park sales to mobile home parks, um, bank sales to banks, et cetera. Um, previously for twenty twenty-two's value, going back, we were using labor and material costs for reproduction of any type of property that were relevant to July of two thousand and eleven. What we did for the twenty twenty-three assessment was we updated those cost tables, as I mentioned, to tables that were relevant to January of twenty twenty. Um, there were newer cost tables available at that time, but what we wanted to do was avoid any hyperinflation due to COVID. Um, so we chose to use those tables. Those are being used to value all properties, um, within the county, whether it's commercial, industrial, or residential currently. Um, that would explain the reason for the large value increases. We increased our cost tables, um, not, over nine years, um, to replace those. Um, as far as the land value goes, all mobile home parks within Brookings City are being valued at the same rate as he mentioned. There's a per acre rate that's set based on the land size. And then it's a little bit misleading, but the structure value in a mobile home park relates to the site value. Um, there might be a gravel pad, an asphalt pad, a concrete pad, and then there's, you know, several things that are involved with the hookups of those trailers on those courts. That's what that value pertains to, and it's driven by the number of sites in the court. So every mobile home park within Brookings City and the county for that matter is being valued at the same per acre rate and the same value per site. Fully supported by, like I said, five years' worth of sales. I mean, you guys are local here, you, you are probably aware of mobile home parks that have sold in the past. Um, more recently here, within the last month, we have the Lamplighter Village Mobile Home Park as seventy rentable units. It's in the, um, it's just west of Main Street, if you're familiar, on, on Fifth Street South. Um, that mobile home park sold within the last month for two million dollars. Being assessed at, um, similar value to this mobile home park up for appeal today based on the per acre rate for the land size and the number of rentable lots. Essentially selling for double the assessed value.
Could I comment back? Okay. So, yeah, I, I have no objection to what basically Jacob is saying, but I do have some things to add to it. Um, so basically the state of South Dakota on their website says that the property values, um, cannot be assessed higher than the actual market value. And they cannot be ass, this and is really important, and it cannot be assessed higher than comparable properties, cannot be assessed higher than comparable properties. So that's really important. So establishing the market value is one thing, and we all know that properties are selling for a lot. And by saying that, um, we've seen some comparable sales, that this particular property is worth at least that, I wouldn't object to that. But what I object to is by saying that even though the value is there, it has to be assessed, it can't be assessed higher than comparable properties. So in this particular instance, the trailer park, the land, is what probably would be of, um, that probably what I would contest. Not all the land, not all land is, um, equally valuable. My argument is that the further away you get from the city, the less valuable. Land within the city would be more valuable than land without it. Provides, um, convenience for people to, um, to have their trailer park, to be closer to restaurants and church or, um, grocery stores or whatever, it's makes it more, or to work. But anyways, um, so I think what we would be requesting is that the land value be adjusted. It shouldn't be evaluated the same as all of the other trailer parks simply because it is on the edge of town. Um, it is kind of in a commercial area, and it would have less value than, um, ones that are closer in town. So it shouldn't be assessed higher than them or equal to them. It should be at least assessed probably lower because it's of lower value. And that argument that the value of the land isn't there, I'm just saying that it shouldn't be assessed equally to other properties that are worth more. So as far as what that land value should be, um, that is one thing that I think we would just have to come together to terms on because there, there really aren't, um, other comparables of around that show what the land value is. It's owned commercial and industrial, but it's being used as a trailer park. Um, the other trailer parks are, within the city are being zoned as commercial and industrial, but are being used as trailer parks. Could they be used as a trailer park if they were to be demolished again? I would say probably not. I'd say the city probably want, would say that they're non-conform use and probably would have to be used in, in another way.
Well, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, um, and that kind of thing. However, um, you know, we're looking at a land use here and we're looking at mobile home parks throughout the city, and this is in the city limits, correct?
Right on the border, yep.
Yep. And so, um, to start getting down and to turn around and say, well, this land potentially could be used for this and potentially could be more valuable, puts a lot more gray into it. And, and so, um, by taking the use of, of these properties and, and making them the same throughout the city of Brookings, um, makes, makes it more sense and more, um, more consistent throughout the town. I understand now if we go outside of Brookings and we go in the, in the county where maybe a mobile home park might be and it's ten miles out of the way, I completely understand that type of thing. But in the city limits, um, that's kind of what we think we have to use. In my opinion, that's that, that goes there. Now, I understand there's maybe pieces of property that could have a higher and better use, uh, that may be our mobile. And show, uh, some commercial where it's a little bit higher traffic, but how do we turn around and justify those? Do we turn around and raise those taxes based off of commercial land sales of convenience stores? You know, we can't start pulling stuff like that. We, we gotta be consistent on it, and, and I think Jacob is on that, that he's consistent on using the same value and the same cost for structures on all the properties. And so, in my opinion, I'm, I'm gonna vote no on this, um, because I, I think it's, it's fair to all the other mobile home parks in there. So that's my two cents on it, I guess.
Then Dane, uh, we handle this, this appeal now?
Be my suggestion, we go ahead and vote on this appeal since the others are all related. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so we vote on this one now, then we can hear all the rest of them related, and I don't think that's a problem with the agenda. Without objection.
Entertain a motion then from the board. We need a motion.
When you make the motion, you need to let me know the dollar amount for the structures and the dollar amount for the land. To give us a total.
We followed the assessor's recommendation for structures of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars, and for the land, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars for a total of nine hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars.
Have a motion a second. Your discussion? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, can we go back to appeal number one? The pellet, we will first, please.
Just for everybody's information, appeal number one is the Gulfview Apartments.
Marier, do you have independent comments on each of these parcels, or is your comments related to all parcels?
They're all similar. Um, I would like to comment on each one if possible, but, um, they're, they are all similar com, um, comments because what we're doing is we're arguing that, um, as the state of South Dakota says that the, the values, the assessed values can't be higher than comparable properties. So.
So you have comparables on all thirteen, thirteen of these?
Yes.
That you're gonna show us?
Yes.
So they're all, all different, or is it the same comparables for all of them?
They're all similar, yep.
Okay, so rather, rather than repeat each one is what I'm trying to get at.
Oh, sure. Is, yeah, let's just look at the comparables. I have a few. Um, basically, I don't know if remember the conversation last year, I spoke with you on the phone. Um, Jacob had put together some comparables, and I used those comparables to, um, present to the board. Um, I came up. Um, and basically what the board decided last year was that, um, comparable value for the properties was roughly around fifty thousand per unit. Um, some people don't like the way of classifying a, uh, an apartment by a unit. A unit is a rental portion of the, um, that the tenant rents. They rent a one bedroom, two bedroom, or three bedroom. Our properties are basically all one and two bedrooms. Um, you know, you can break it down into square footage. Um, Jacob wrote, um, uh, reached his assessed value from what he told me by, um, the cost approach. He, he can describe what he did, but basically he took the value, what it would cost to reproduce the building in today's dollars or in twenty, pre-COVID dollars, and assigned that as the value of the property, and he did that with all the apartments. And then he deducted some depreciation and added the land value, and that was what he used as, um, the values for properties. The state of South Dakota states that it's, the, the market value is to be as, um, established by using a combination of the cost approach, market approach, and income approach. And, you know, the reason that we're here today is because sometimes, you know, not everything is in black and white, and there's a little bit of gray area there, like you said, and some things, and sometimes things just don't add up, they don't always fit in the box. But, you know, the market approach would tell you that, you know, the properties are, all the properties in Brookings, none of the properties in Brookings that I could see are, at least in, even these comparables that Jacob gave me are, um, the values are set at the market value, they're all below that. The income approach was used simply to justify the cost approach, but there's some, there's a, there's a little bit of a problem there because one property, even though it can justify the cost, one property could be producing more income than another property. So one property could be more profitable, and really that, what that does is a more profitable property actually increases its value. Someone that, the market value is, it was defined as the value that a buyer would pay for the property, and that's the way they're technically supposed to be assessed. Um, it's, so, you know, a buyer, I, I consider myself as a. It's, so, you know, a buyer, I consider myself as a, an investor now. I'm trying to acquire properties. And when you try to buy a property, well, if you're gonna get a loan from the loan, they wanna make sure that that property is worth what you're paying for it, because they're giving you a mortgage. They wanna look at the income that the property produces. They might wanna look at the, how much it would cost to rebuild. The insurance company definitely does, that's what they base their rates on, to rebuild it the way it is. And they'll look at comparable sales, so you have an appraiser that goes out there. What we're talking about is a little bit different, we're talking about assessed values. And we just wanna make sure that everything is comparable. And the reason that we're here is because we've found some properties that are not being assessed comparably, which results in the properties that we're contesting being taxed higher than other properties, which puts us at a disadvantage, which means that we would theoretically have to try to raise rate, raise rents. And we've got a lot of tenants in there that are old, that been living there for 20, 30 years, and on fixed income, and we're just trying to be good stewards. Some of our rents are lower than our competitors, and you might ask why? Well, you know, maybe they need to be increased, but, you know, at the same time, we do have tenants that do need a place to live, they're Perking residents, and, you know, the fact that rents are going up and times might be good for the rental market doesn't mean that we really wanna jump on that bag wagon. So basically, can't forget that, the argument here is not that the values are there, but that they're not, they're not, that they're being assessed higher than comparables. So as far as the comparables go, Jacob probably could bring those up on the screen. They're the same comparables that he used last year. The values of those comparables haven't changed. So from '23 to '24, the values of the comparables didn't change. Last year, when you heard my appeal, we went through all those comparables, and it was determined that there, that there actually was an issue, that the properties that I'm appealing were being assessed higher than comparable properties. So all of our properties here that we're appealing happen to have brick exteriors. Now, it's more expensive to put up brick now than it was back when they were built. But, you know, brick is just a form of maintenance-free exterior. Now, people use, you know, the hardy board, or they use vinyl siding, keep the prices down. But does that really increase the value of the property? I would say, you know, if you wanna replace it with brick now, you're gonna have to pay more to do that. But does that increase the value of the property? Does it increase the income? Are you gonna get more tenants wanting to rent there because you have brick? No, it really doesn't. You know, the value of the property is based on how much income it's gonna produce. So some of the properties too, that are comparables, are actually smaller properties. They, they're more concentrated, they have more apartment units, more income for a smaller area. Does that mean that they're less valuable? Actually not, it makes them more valuable, because you got less grass to cut, less snow to plow, and you've, and all these other ones, they've got higher rents. So if we look at Golf View, I think we gotta bring up the comparables if we're gonna go back there again. Jacob, do you have those?
No, I don't. As we've already discussed at the local board level, I'm not using comparable properties to support my value.
Okay, so last year, we used comparable properties to support the values. Jacob sent me an email. Are those emails still, can you bring those up on the screen?
I don't have those from last year, no.
Okay. Should I just give you the addresses of some comparables? We wanna go there, or we wanna rely on what you guys did last year? I'm assuming it's the same board, that you guys, we spent a lot of time analyzing the different properties. So I, last year, I appealed five properties, and basically, we broke it down into a per-unit. Could've broken it down into square foot, which was, which is similar to the cost method that Jacob used to establishing the cost. But we break it down into a per-unit, because that's what apartments are basically based on. They're not like office buildings where you rent it and you charge so much a square foot. And with apartments, you charge so much apartment, you know, if it's a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom. You know, the size plays a factor in it, but you're not charging by the square foot. You're charging for a two-bedroom, maybe with a den, or with two bathrooms, or something like that. They don't break it down into square foot. Should I give you a list of comparables that we used last year? I don't know if you're able to bring those up.
Whatever information you wanna share, and Jacob will have his turn.
Okay. So with Golf View, right now, that's a 74-unit apartment complex. There's 67 units on it, or they're about, the assessed value comes at 67,400. That's for the 2024 assessment. Properties taxes on that particular unit went up $24,274 over one-year period, from 2022 to 2023. From '23 to '24, the value stayed elevated like that. So like I said, we tried to appeal the change from 2022 to 2023, and we were not able to be heard due to that technicality. So if we go off of the comparables that are used, the comparables were used for the Pines. So the address of the Pines properties are 829, 839 Park Avenue. Those are my particular apartments, and those were assessed at around $50,000 in 2020, reassessed in 2023 at approximately $50,000.
Excuse me, just one more. Could you bring those particular appeal numbers up on the addresses? We can see them on the board here. Because he's just gonna go through each of them, as I understand it, so it'd be nice if we had on the screen.
Okay.
So if you can tell us which number it is.
Oh, okay, so you want me to give you some addresses of comparables? I'm telling you the properties that I appealed last year, and basically, they were reassessed back down to approximately $50,000 with an adjustment for land.
Because the comparables you're using aren't in your appeals, correct? The comparable properties that you're giving to us are not being appealed.
They're not being appealed, right? The ones, the comparables you're using are not being appealed today.
Those are not, I'm using comparable properties that are not mine.
Right.
The five, the 829 and 839, those are not, those are properties that I appealed last year that were readjusted, but they would be comparable to the Golf View.
The 829 and 839 Park Avenue apartments are being appealed today.
So basically, I think if we were to look at some of the comparables that Jason gave me last year, to establish the $50,000 a unit, I think maybe we should start there and try to do that. So the closest apartment complex to the Golf View would be the Southland Apartments, on Southland there, and 8th Street. There's quite a few apartments there. So an address that's comparable would be, that was used as comparable, that was given to me as a comparable, was 920 Southland Lane. PID is 405-85-00000805. It's a 57,000, or 57-unit apartment building. It sold at $50,000 per unit. It sold in 2019. The assessed value for 2024 is $44,245 per unit. I don't know if you wanna bring that one up, that would be a good comparable. So we're just trying to show comparables. The law states that I'm appealing the Golf View Apartments, that this property can't be assessed higher than a comparable property. So they're not the exact same, but I'm just trying to argue that it can't be assessed higher than a comparable, so there's gotta be some methodology to determine the comparable price. Jacob's gonna argue that it was the cost, but it really isn't the cost, because we're not rebuilding this property today, and if we were to rebuild these properties, it wouldn't be built the same. This one doesn't have brick interior, but it does, it does have that hardy board. But anyways, it's valued at $67,404 a unit right now. Property taxes, like I said, went up $24,274 from 2022 to 2023, and are still at that rate today.
Mike, Michael, what's the age difference between those two properties, the construction date? You know, you know what they are?
Golf View Apartments, construction started in 2008, concluded in 2012. The Southland Apartments were built in the late 70s through the late 80s.
So I think, just to try to keep the conversation going here a little bit here, is if we talk about the way we look at them, as we look at the cost to build, and then you lower them down based off of the age of them, and depreciation of them, and what that certain value is. And so to take a 2072, and try to make them equal, is not gonna, not gonna work, because you're taking that cost, you're making adjustment for the depreciation, and those ones that are built in the 70s have depreciated a lot more, tougher condition, probably not gonna demand the rents that a newer, better condition would be. And I think that's how we look at these on a cost basis, is okay, what are we, what are these costs to replace them? And we can't turn around and say, well, what if we did them at a different way, or we wouldn't build them this way anymore? That, we can't take into consideration. You have to kinda keep it a little more black and white, where it's like, okay, this is what it costs now. And in the last two years, the cost of a building has gone up tremendously. It's raised everybody's taxes across the board because of the cost. But as they get older, you decrease that cost down. So you have a four-year-old complex, still gonna be in good condition, it's probably gonna be reduced by maybe 10%. I'm just throwing a number out there, I'm not exact, Jacob would know the difference. But as you get down to 30-year, it might be 40 or 50% off of that. And that's where you make those adjustments, and the adjustments take place, and the tax costs is based off that cost. And so, you know, to take 1970s to 2008, and try to make them equal, you're not gonna get, we can't get that way. It's, if that's at 50, this one being 30 years newer, has to be in the 60s or 70s. Especially if cost, and I'm not sure what cost is, Jacob, I haven't heard that yet, that number. But, you know, if it's 100 bucks, and I'm just throwing that out there, I'm not sure what it is per unit, you know, then you depreciate it down by the age. And I think to try to put those two together and go equal on it, you can't do that.
No, I agree with you 100%. And the law states that you're supposed to use a combination of the three different valuation methods, not just one. It states that you're supposed to use the cost approach, which Jacob did, you're supposed to use the market approach, and the income approach, and you're supposed to use them all together, combined.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah. So. That's where the little tricky part comes in, because you have to, once you develop the cost, which is black and white, like you said, then you have to go on and look at the other approaches, too, the market approach and the income approach, and you have to be able to determine what the actual, you know, to make them comparable.
Yeah, and you made a comment that you don't raise your rents, because you have a lot of elderly people and stuff like that, and I applaud you for that. Problem is, is things keep going up, just like taxes, and heat, and costs, and all of that stuff. And so, you know, basically, I look at this, you know, you may have to raise your taxes in your apartments based off of what $24,070 a unit apartment, $30 a month. And I wish you didn't have to, but to make it fair and equal, like he has to do, they gotta keep the taxes fair and equal. And even though you're not charging as much rent as somebody else, can't turn around and say, okay, because you're not charging, the market rent is this, and you're charging below market rent. And if you're charging below market rent, that is more of a business decision for you than it is for a tax assessment for us. And so, as much as I applaud you for that, and everything has gone up, and housing has gone up, and it's crazy, me being as a realtor, I'd love to see it go down somehow. But, you know, the way costs have gone up, for Jacob to do his job, you know, he needs to get fair and equal. And even though you're not charging as much rents as the other ones, you can't turn around and take that into consideration. It's more of a business decision than it is a valuation decision.
No problem. So just to be, you know, to stay within the law, I'm just saying we gotta use a combination of the cost, market, and income. And we have to make sure that a comparable is not being charged less than what the properties that we are appealing. Another particular property would be the Hyde Wood Park LLC Apartments at 1016 Southland Lane. PID number on that is 405-85-70810. So those are similar construction. Close in age, and pretty close in location. So to say that, to say that the properties are simply, by simply using the cost approach to say that everything is fair and equal, is not really, is not being law-abiding, is really not the way it should be, because properties are supposed to be assessed with a combination of all three of them. So.
Okay, at this time, like Jacob, can you give your information?
I'll just speak to appeal number one here for now, with the Golf View Apartments, to show that we're valuing all properties fair and equal, meaning we're not assessing somebody for something they don't have. I'll explain the process of completing the assessment on our apartment property. I mean, we show up on site, we measure the building, we take into consideration the exterior construction, the interior amenities, the size of the land, the square footage of asphalt or concrete on that, on that property, the number of plumbing fixtures, the number of built-in appliances. I mean, it's so finite that we can't go to a property next door and say, okay, this is comparable. So it should be assessed at $50,000 a unit across the board. That's not the way it works in our world. We have to assess you for exactly what you have on site. We depreciate it by exactly the age of the property. We value the land to the square foot. So we're assessing everybody using the same methodology, which yes, is one of the three avenues of arriving at an assessment. We can support the assessment through that method, using the income that was either given to us as stated by Darla, or that was advertised on the Marriarity Rentals website. And even though your income, as you stated, is lower than market rent, that stated income still supports that the assessed value driven through the replacement cost approach is accurate and does not require a value reduction. Specifically on the Golf View Apartments, as he said, there's 74 units on site. There's a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom, or two-bedroom with a den. The rents range from 825 a unit on the one-bedroom, to 975 on the two-bedroom and a den. Using that income by unit, by month, for the full year, and then a cap rate of nine and a half percent. I should explain a little bit more, too. The cap rate of nine and a half percent is a combination of your recapture rate, your local interest rate, and your effective tax rate. That's all pulled from local data. The other two numbers that are in there that are pulled from local data are your market vacancy percentage and your market expenses for an apartment complex. So we're giving, off of that gross income, we're giving 20% for expenses, and we're giving another 5% for vacancies, using that nine and a half percent cap rate. The income method of valuation, which is one of the three methods that we can use to value a property, that's an income property, supports an assessed value of six, just about 6.5 million on that complex. The 2023 and 2024 assessment remained unchanged, but it went out the door at $4,987,900. So our replacement cost method, one of the methods that's, that we're allowed to use to come up with an assessed value, is a million and a half short of what the income on that property would generate on the open market. And I also say too, I would use the term comparables on the list that you have from from last year that we used at the here. Office was a list of apartment sales, and that's what I gave you. Um, you can't take a sale price of an apartment, divide it into the number of units, and apply that across the board. You may be looking at an apple and an orange when you're doing that, and I would just caution you on doing that. That's all the comments I have on appeal number one.
Jacob, what, what is new construction for, is there a dollar per unit? Is it a hundred, is it a hun- hundred and twenty thousand now, is it ninety thousand? What is the, have you seen as a market rate?
Yeah, I think when we talked about this last year, using our, our old cost, it was around eighty thousand per unit. Now that we've updated that, it's probably around a hundred thousand a unit.
Any other questions for Jacob? Any none? Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion, uh, to accept the assessor's record as, as assessed.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move on to item number C. Discussion possible action on appeal number three. The panel, go ahead.
Uh, which address is that?
Sorry, eight thirty Park Avenue.
Okay. Um, so I'm just getting a little frustrated that we're just simply using the cost approach and not a combination. Um, state law says that properties are supposed to be assessed equally and fairly. Cost approach determines the cost of reproducing that property equally and fairly, but the assessed value is supposed to be a combination of cost, market, and income approach. If I find, and I'm, I'm just wondering if you're saying if there's nothing comparable to any of these properties, because if there's nothing comparable, there's no, there's no need for the appeal process, because we're here today because you're supposed to be able to make a subjective decision on what is comparable and what's not, not based on the information that was entered into the computer to, um, reach the cost value. I'm not arguing the cost approach at all. I'm arguing that my properties need to be assessed equally and fairly and comparably, and that as the state law says that the cost approach and the market approach and the income approach have to be used in combination, not to support one particular approach, but in combination. So you use all three of them to determine the value, not to support the value of a property that I'm appealing, but to support all values of properties. So, you know, we might just be wasting a bunch of time here if we're not gonna agree that there can be comparable. Um, but what I would say is, eight thirty, eight forty, eight forty-four Park Avenue is a thirty-six unit apartment complex. Less than a thousand feet away is a thirty-six unit apartment complex that's built very similar, except it doesn't have brick. But it is thirty-six units, the acreage, or the, the land, the land is less, there's less land, it's more concentrated, thirty-six units, and it's being assessed at fifty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars per unit. Now, less than a thousand feet away is another apartment, a group of apartments that's being assessed at seventy thousand fifty dollars a unit. They look identical. If you were to go look at them, you'd, you'd think that the builders, they look exactly the same, and I would say that they're comparable. Um, so if you use that as a comparable, then at least that particular complex should be assessed at fifty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty per unit versus the seventy thousand a unit. To say that there's no, nothing comparable, then it just simply says that there's no need for a appeals process, and that we're just wasting our time.
Do you have any comparable sales? Okay, so I think when you talk comparables, we're talking comparable sale that is within the last, you know, two years, because we're, we're, you're looking at one on two thousand and nineteen sale, which is pushing five years, and a lot has changed over the last five years on sales, costs, rents, all of that type of stuff. Um, do you have any comparable sales in the last two years, um, that would say, hey, they're still selling for fifty thousand a square foot, they're not?
This particular one, um, this particular one was sold in twenty-one, March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, but that really doesn't matter, because it's being, you know, the sales, you know, it was sold at, okay, it was sold at fifty-five thousand five hundred per unit on March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, okay, for two million dollars. But we're, we're missing the point. The point is that, you know, that bring it, if we were to say that, oh, these should be assessed at fifty-five thousand dollars a unit, because that particular one sold for that, I, I think that that, that's, that's missing the whole point. The point is, it's being assessed at fifty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. So I'm stating that my property, since it's similar, basically just like it, thirty-six units, similar construction, should be assessed the same way. That's, that's what it comes down to. One property should be assessed the same as another one if it's similar. State law says that it cannot be assessed higher, so.
And the valuation for this particular property went up a million dollars. Taxes increased because of that seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars.
So you can't just use the cost as a comparison, you know, if you wanna get into redoing the formula, you know, it's cost, market approach, and income approach. Because the state law says that you cannot assess someone's property higher than another's property if they're similar, you know, if they're comparable, you know. There are, there are properties that are comparable, you can get to that, you know, you can try to say that it's the cost approach, but no, the state law says it's gotta be a combination of the approaches. So you can step back and just look at it subjectively and honestly and say, yeah, those are comparable. Look, they, two-bedroom, thousand feet apart, they're all twelve-unit buildings, there's two-story, twelve units per building, three buildings in the complex, they all got parking spots, they get garages. They're similar, you know, the rents are the same, um, exterior, um, maintenance, you know, the exterior on the Hyde Wood has got the hardy board, they just replaced it, got a new roof. So, that's what it comes down to. One property's gotta be assessed comparable, you know, the same or less than another property.
Jacob, what's the, what's the difference in the values there for those properties? Have you looked at that?
Um, I haven't looked that, that specifically, because I'm not using comparable properties, and this, this particular sale, in fact, was rejected because it was sold from attorney-client to attorney, not on the open market. That sale doesn't hold any weight as far as our market analysis is concerned. Um, one thing I will add on to, you know, he's saying, you know, he's reiterating that we must use the three approaches to value. Yes, that's true. One question I would have for him is, have you gone through the sales comparison approach as it's laid out by state law? I mean, you're saying that we must use the sales comparison approach, and I know that, but maybe you aren't aware that when you're using the sales comparison approach, you take your subject property, and you take your three comparable properties, and you put them in a grid system, and you adjust by, to the dollar amount for, you know, whether your comparable property is lacking something, that your subject property has, you adjust up. If your comparable property has something your subject property doesn't have, you adjust down to the dollar amount. You can't just take a sale price per unit and back into it and say, well, they're similar properties. We go even farther than that and say, yes, they might be similar, but to get them exactly comparable, you have to adjust your comparable properties up or down to get to exactly what the subject has. And that's how we can use that replacement cost method, because we are assessing each property with exactly what it has on site. I'm just taking a little bit of offense here, saying that I'm not assessing properties fairly when I'm looking at comparable properties, and I can guarantee you that, yes, I am. I'm doing it more finitely than what you're doing there, backing into a per-unit rate. Um, if we just stick to appeal number three here, um, what I can do is support that replacement cost method. Yes, the value did increase between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. We all know the reason for that, is because we updated replacement cost tables from twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty. Costs, you know, went up during that time period, probably thirty to forty percent in construction. Properties of age also receive more depreciation because of that, they're essentially nine years older within our system. What I can support that with too, is the income approach to valuation on that property. Between all the units there, we have thirty-six rentable units, eighteen of them being one-bedroom and eighteen of them being two-bedrooms. Your stated income on those ranges from seven twenty-five a unit to seven ninety-five. The assessment went out the door at two million five hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred. The income method of valuation would support a value of two million six hundred and twenty-six thousand five sixty, supporting that our cost method does not deserve a value reduction when looking at the income method on that property.
Any questions, Jacob?
I, I support Jacob's recommendation. I'll make a motion that the structure stay at two million two hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, that the land be at two hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred dollars for a total of two million five hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number D. Discussion of possible action on appeal number four.
Five thirty-four, Seventh Avenue South.
I would have a question, is last year we, um, we spoke, I'm assuming that I, it's the same board, and we were able to realize that there are actually are comparables, that the cost method isn't the only method that should be used exclusively, and we were able to come to a, at a comparable price based on the comparables that were submitted to the board, that, um, it would be around fifty thousand a unit. So the, the property just to the north of that, five-ten Seventh Avenue, that directly abuts the property, its assessed value was assessed, reassessed at fifty thousand a unit from twenty-two, uh, the twenty-twenty-three, um, assessment. I, I feel like we're not on the same page. Um, you know, I asked Jacob for comparables, and it's, it seems that there are no comparables for any properties, that there really isn't a need for a commission to try to find a comparable or to analyze properties that are similar. State law says that two properties that are comparable, that my property shouldn't be assessed higher than a comparable property. It's as simple as that, and that the evaluation is supposed to be, you know, to, 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 uh, to find the value of a property, well, you can use the cost, you have to use a combination of the cost, market, and income approach. So I'm not here to try to get a new formula for you, or to say that he's not doing his job, I'm just saying, there are such things, comparables, that when everything is run through the computer and one thing, um, supports another thing, that there are, there are some issues that are not being addressed here. And I'd just like to know why we're handling it different today than we did last year, that we're not able to have an open mind and see that there is such a thing as a comparable property, and that we're just gonna rely on the cost approach with the values being supported by the market approach and income approach. State law says it's gotta be a combination. There is such a thing as a comparable, and I just don't think that you guys are gonna be open to realizing that there is such a thing as a comparable, that it's all based off of cost. So basically, um, that particular property should be, um, assessed at fifty thousand a unit, as the property directly to the north of it was reassessed, and, um, I just feel frustrated that we're not on the same page. That's it.
Yeah. Jacob, you have info on appeal number four?
Yeah, my only comment to this one is the assessed value went out at nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred. There's sixteen two-bedroom units on site that rent for seven fifty a unit, so the cost method is supported by the income method, um, with a value of one million one hundred and fifty-two thousand. Would garner based on the income on that property. And I'm not here to argue that there, the properties that I gave you aren't comparable, I would just caution that you must adjust your comparable properties to be exactly what your subject is, not just take sale prices and back into a per-unit rate. Those units can vary on size, condition, amenities, et cetera.
I'd like to add to that, so, uh, five-ten Seventh Avenue South, like I said, abuts this property. It has the exact same floor plan, it's built by the same builder, it was owned by the same owner, it's the same exact property, it's sixteen unit, there's no difference. You could interchange the buildings, so if you can't say that that's not comparable, then I think that there's no hope here. Um, last year, we saw that, there was, there was an issue, things haven't changed, so...
No, I think things have changed. I mean, I think the costs to build, the costs for rent, costs have all gone up, so it's not the same as last year. And that's where I think maybe the disconnect might be, is that you're using last year's or comps back from a long time and want it to stay, keep it that way.
Jacob is too. Jacob hasn't changed any of that.
He changed the cost approach. The cost approach went from eighty thousand to a hundred thousand, and he changed that. And unless you have comparable sales from the last couple of years, also went up, then when you're talking comparable properties, you're talking one thing of this property to this property comparable. When you use the sales approach, use comparable sales, not comparable assessed properties, use comparable sales. And that's what you have to update on. And if we're on two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one sales, they're not the same as, as any sales that were done in twenty-two or twenty-three. And if we don't have any more of those, then the sales approach kinda sets back. You take what is, is the best information that you have. You take either cost approach, sales approach, or income approach. And if you're selling a single-family home, income approach doesn't even work, and you throw it out. So you make that adjustment, you have to take all three of them and put them together, but if one doesn't make sense, or you don't have comparable sales, you don't use it. I've done market evaluations where there is not a sale for the last two years on a property, and so we look at cost, depreciation, and, and we, and, uh, we look at income, if there's income. And so, when there isn't, of the three approaches, when there's not adequate data, you don't weigh that as much, you weigh the stuff that has the data. And over the last year, the cost approach has gone up, and they've made adjustments to that, and they have that data, they have the rent income also for market rate, they have the depreciation schedules, they have all of that market data. But if they don't have any comparable sales in the last couple of years, you don't weigh that as heavy, you keep it on the cost approach, and that's what he's doing. If we'd had three or four sales in the last three years, he would look at that, and he would compare it and do the exact same there, but if we don't have them, you can't use that approach, if you don't have them up to date, because you can only go back so far, especially the way that things have changed the last couple of years. And so, in my opinion, what I think he's doing is he's weighing his approaches that he has to use, he has to consider them, but if there are no comps in the last couple of years, you don't weigh that as heavily. And I think that's what's being done here, in my opinion.
Any other comments from the board? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to assess, uh, at the assessment notice of nine thirty-eight, eight hundred, uh, from the equalization recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? You can call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Kogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, discussion of possible action on Paul Marready, appeal number five. What is the address on this?
Seven twenty-six, Midary Avenue.
No comments?
Well, state law just states that, um, comparable properties need to be assessed equally, equitably and fairly. Um, so this property is same situation. Um, it's being assessed higher than comparable, than a comparable property. State law says that it cannot be assessed higher than a comparable property. And, um, to determine the value, a combination of the cost, market and the fact that there exists a comparable property that is being assessed lower, um, and the board is allowing this to happen. State law is being broken. My property is being, these properties being assessed higher than what they should be. I'm not saying that the values are higher or lower. I'm saying they're assessed higher than they should be. They shouldn't be assessed any higher than a comparable property.
Did Jacob, did background on this, project for one?
I just want to drive home the idea of being comparable here because you mentioned that you have two units, both under your ownership, that are sixteen-unit buildings. They're identical. You said they could have probably taken the floor plan and moved it across the street and built the same building. You're saying those are comparable and I don't disagree. But in order to fully understand that I'm making adjustments to comparable properties to get to exactly what the subject has, I would point out that those two units that you said are identical have, are, are advertised at different rents. There must be a reason why you're charging less rent on the one building, which in your words is identical to the other building that has higher rent. Those units renting for seven twenty-five on the one building and seven fifty in the other. You know, I'm just pointing out that if they were truly identical, wouldn't the rents then be identical as well? And going back to seven twenty-six, Midary Avenue, our assessment went out the door at five hundred and thirty thousand. There's eight two-bedroom units on site that rent for seven fifty a month. So the income method would produce a value of five hundred and seventy-six thousand, supporting our assessed value.
Any questions, board? Entertaining motion from...
Make a motion to use the assessor's valuation of five hundred and thirty thousand. I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Kogman.
Aye.
Hostler. Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, discussion of possible action on Paul Marready, appeal number six.
The address is seven seventeen Eleventh Ave.
Seven seventeen. Don't.
Um, basically the same thing. Um, state law requires that this property not be assessed higher than a comparable property. I've submitted comparable properties and I am objecting because this property is being assessed at a higher rate than a comparable property. I believe that this property should be assessed at fifty thousand a unit also.
Jacob?
Uh, the assessed value on this property went out the door at five hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred. Eight units on site. Rent is seven seventy-five per unit, which gives us an income value on that property of five hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred, supporting our assessment at five eighteen nine hundred.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the assessment notice of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and on the structures and the land at forty-nine, five hundred for a total of five hundred and eighteen nine hundred. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Kogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley. Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, discussion of possible action on Paul Marready, appeal number seven.
Seven sixteen, Midary Ave.
This is an eight-unit property. Um, it's being assessed at fifty-three thousand two hundred and twelve dollars a, a unit. Closer to the fifty thousand dollars per unit I believe it should be assessed at. Property taxes went up thirteen hundred, one thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. From twenty-two to twenty-three. State law requires that this property not be assessed higher than a comparable property. I've submitted comparable properties. I've submitted that, uh, ten sixteen, in addition to the comparable, um, sales and properties that this city is, the county has given me, I've, um, submitted ten sixteen Southland Lane and seven oh five Sixth Avenue South as comparables, which, um, the seven oh five Sixth Avenue South is being assessed at fifty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-four. I believe that this property, since it is less valuable, should be assessed at fifty thousand per unit.
Jacob?
The assessed value on this property went out the door at four hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred. As Michael mentioned, there's eight units on site, all being two bedrooms. Rent advertised at seven sixty-five a month, which gives us an income value on that property if using that method at five hundred and eighty-seven thousand five twenty, supporting our assessment at four twenty-five seven hundred.
Entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, assessment notice, uh, at, from equalization, three eighty-one, one hundred for structures, forty-four, six hundred for land, totaling four twenty-five seven hundred.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? You can then call the roll, please.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Kogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, discussion of possible action on Paul Marready, appeal number eight.
Seven twenty-two, Midary Ave.
Similar to the other, um, appeals. Uh, it should, it's a four-unit building. It's being assessed at fifty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars per unit. Property taxes went up thousand sixty-one eighty-eight from twenty-two to twenty-three. Uh, it should be assessed at comparable, um, value, which is fifty thousand per unit. I've submitted comparables to the city, uh, to the board. And state law requires that this property not be assessed at a higher comparable than, at a higher valuation than a comparable. Comparable value is fifty thousand. Therefore, the, um, the value of this property should be fifty thousand times four, which is two hundred thousand. It's being assessed at two hundred and nine thousand four hundred, or actually two hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred. It went up. Okay. Okay, yeah, I see that. That's it.
Jacob?
The assessed value on this property went out at two hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred. It's a four-unit, all being two bedrooms. Advertised rent at seven fifty a month, which gives us an income value on that property of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, supporting our value on the assessment at two thirty-four two hundred.
Okay.
Make a motion that we accept the assessor's recommendation for structures of two hundred and nine thousand four hundred, land at twenty-four thousand eight hundred for a total of two hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Kogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I. Discussion of possible action on Paul Marready, appeal number nine.
Appeal number nine is actually one that I brought back to the board, um, from the city level. This property is eight seventeen Onaka Trail. You might be familiar with it. I think it started out as an assisted living facility. The property was, uh, the value was reduced at the local board level from the assessment that went out the door at five hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred to three hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred, using the income derived from that property to support that value. Excuse me. The appellant's request was three hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred. The local board took action based on the income and set the value at three hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight forty. I'm requesting to revisit this property, um, simply due to the fact that the property was purchased by the current owner in two thousand and eleven for five hundred thousand dollars. The current assessment at five hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred only represents an overall increase of four and a half percent. You know, appreciation from the twenty-eleven sale to today's value. I think that holds weight in this argument. I don't think that we can, we can put all the weight on the decision with the income derived from the property because it, it more than likely has some sort of obsolescence on the property based on the fact that it was not constructed as an apartment initially, but is now being used as such. I'll let Michael speak to this one if he would like to.
Well, to apply a sales approach to one property, not to apply it to all the other properties would be, um, unfair and unequal and, uh, not doing our job. None of these properties in Brookings that were sold, none of these apartments, these comparable sales that Jacob gave me, none of those sale prices were used in, uh, determining the assessed value. So to pick out one property and not all the properties is unfair and unequal. And I think that, um, his request should be denied. And that the property should be assessed at what the city council or the previous board recommended and we accept it. We were not made aware that this was going to be, um, appealed. We would have probably come a little bit more prepared, but, um, basically to use the sales approach here and not use it on other properties is not fair.
What's the address of this one again?
Eight seventeen Onaka Trail.
The background, it, it was, uh, is that ranch-style, white one over there by the airport?
Yes, it's a single-story building. It's kind of in an L-shaped on the corner there of, uh, West A Street South and Onaka Trail. I can give you a little more background too, if you, if you would like. It was, uh, originally a Good Samaritan community health services site. Built in nineteen ninety-eight. And the property was sold to the Marready family in June of two thousand and eleven for five hundred thousand. And I'm not, I'm not picking and choosing that this sale price is relevant because it supports a higher value. What I'm doing is saying that that sale price must have held weight and meant something back in two thousand and eleven when Mr. Marready chose to pay that much for that property. So I don't know that I support a value reduction by the board solely based on the income. If there's market data relevant to the appeal, that would not support that. I mean, the, the three methods of valuation here, being replacement cost is, is where the assessment was derived. You know, trying to support that with the income method, but if the income method on this property doesn't fully support the assessment because it's not meant to be an apartment, it's, it's kind of adapted into one after the sale. The sale price should hold some weight. That's my argument on that.
I would argue that, um, a sale price from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one would hold more weight than a sale price back in two thousand ten.
I would agree. You said, uh, income approach came in at that three eighty-eight?
Yeah.
I, I agree with Michael on that one. I, you know, I'm not sure who, who the sale was made to or any of that kind of stuff, um, that kind of thing, but, uh, it's a long time back and, uh, I, I, I would not use that if I were doing it anyway. I don't know what was entailed with that sale. But, um, I guess I would agree to stay consistent from what we've been doing and what we've been looking at. That the income approach is showing something. It's not supporting that value of it because it was not meant to be a, probably an apartment. I don't know if there's, is there kitchens in every one of them or, you know, you know, is, is it more like, uh, where you have your, you have your room? And then you go to a place to eat?
Each unit has a kitchen.
Each, each unit does have a kitchen. Okay, okay. But it's not a group home or anything like that, so. But there's obviously, you know, something here that is keeping the rents down. And this is where, um, I think you need to, we need to, if the rents don't justify the assessment notice, I think there needs to be an adjustment made based off of that, or excuse me, the cost approach. If the rent approach doesn't justify the cost approach, I can see making an adjustment on this one.
Entertaining motion for, uh...
I'll make a motion to use the local board action of, uh, three hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for the structure and sixty-three thousand for the land. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for the structure and sixty-three thousand for the land for three hundred and eighty-eight eight forty.
I'd second that. Any other discussion? You can then call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Kogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K, discussion of possible action on Mike Marready, appeal number eleven.
Actually, we skipped ten. We need to do ten. Jay.
Whoops, sorry. Mike Marready, appeal number ten.
What address are we looking at?
Regrouping here a little bit. Give me a second. Uh, seven oh three A Street South.
All right, so seven oh three Eighth Avenue South is a, uh, apex. Um, first of all, I want to read a little letter. I don't know if you got that included with your, um, with my appeal. It basically states that I'm appealing the twenty twenty-four real estate assessment for five apartments, properties that I own in Brookings. And I, please see the attached objective to real property assessment forms. These are the same properties that were adjusted last year by the board. I agreed with the board's twenty twenty-three adjustment. I'm appealing the twenty, I'm appealing the twenty twenty-four real estate assessment because it changes the final values set by the county board in twenty twenty-three. And it results in these properties being assessed higher than the comparables used to reassess them in twenty twenty-three and other comparable properties assessed in twenty twenty-four. Thus, they are not being assessed equitably. The twenty twenty-four assessed values were comparable used in the twenty twenty-three reassessed values in the twenty twenty-four assessment. Therefore, my property's assessments for twenty-four, twenty-four should remain unchanged also. They should remain the same as the value already established by the county board of equalization. Please see the attached final values established by the county board. So from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, um, actually from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, the, the twenty twenty-three value, evaluation was reassessed by the board and established at what it, what it was established at, basically. Those, um, forms were included. I don't know if you have copies of them, but... Sixty thousand one hundred. For the, um, land and three hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred for the building. And that was the finally value, final value by the county board of equalization. So basically, um, the board determined. Um, the final value. The values that they used to determine the final value, the comparable properties. Did not change in value. My particular property went up, whereas the comparables did not. And I'm arguing that my property cannot be assessed higher than comparable properties. That's state law. So the whole argument here is comparable. The previous board was able to determine that there are comparable properties. And that the assessed value of my particular property should be as they found. That makes sense. You were just arguing with comparables now. Well, same as we did before, but. Um, the previous board set, uh, set a, a final value. I'm asking you to honor their decision. Um, the values of comparables did not change. Therefore, the value of my property should not change. Should not increase. Theirs did not increase. Mine should not increase. That's all about equalization, about equal and about being fair.
Jacob?
And this property here was one that was appealed last year. Like Michael mentioned, the value. The board for all five properties that were heard. And I don't feel that that was. A fair and equal method of, of, of valuing properties because they're not exactly identical. Um, the reason the value on your property went up from the, the county board decision in twenty-three to what it is. On the twenty twenty-four assessment notice. Was strictly taking the value that the board set right back to what it was before the adjustment. You would be correct in stating that the comparable properties did not change in value. Nor would yours have had the board not heard those appeals last year. This property in particular. Seven oh three A Street South has eight two-bedroom units on site. Rent is advertised at seven forty per unit. The assessment of five fifty-three one hundred is supported by the income method evaluation at five sixty-eight three twenty.
Questions from the board? Entertaining motion.
All right, I'll make a motion, um, that, uh, we accept the assessor's recommendation of five fifty-three one hundred. Four ninety-three for the structures, sixty thousand one hundred for the land.
Second to that motion.
I have a motion in a second. No further discussion. Call or roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall? Bartley? Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K, Michael Mararity appeal number eleven.
Address is five ten Seventh Avenue South.
Bill, go ahead. On April eleventh, um, County Board of Equalization. Um, set the final value for this property at forty-three thousand, for this property's land at forty-three thousand six hundred dollars. It set the final value for the. Thousand four hundred. Uh, the comparable properties. Um, are the same. Their values did not change. The twenty twenty-four valuation has changed. My argument is that. My value should not have changed because the comparables used have not changed. In fact, none of the. None of the apartment property valuations changed from twenty twenty-three and to twenty twenty-four for apartments in Brookings, South Dakota. Except mine. I feel that's unfair. I feel that the board was able to. Um, find properties that were comparable and determine a, uh. A comparable value. They set the value. And I believe that the, the valuation, that my property should not be evaluated. Higher than a comparable property. So I'm requesting that, uh. Comparable, uh, I'm, I'm requesting that the value be four hundred, forty-three thousand six hundred for the land and seven hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred for the, the building. Should remain the same since all the other properties remain the same.
Yeah, this property value for twenty twenty-four simply went from, um, what went out at the door in twenty-three before. Sixteen units on site, all being two bedrooms. Rents on these stated at seven twenty-five a month. Supports our assessment at nine ninety-nine eight hundred with an income value at one million one hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred.
Entertaining motion from the board?
I'll make a motion, uh, structures at nine fifty-six two hundred, land at forty-three six hundred for a total of ninety-nine. Nine hundred and ninety-nine eight hundred as, uh, assessed, uh, notice.
A motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
I'm L. About discussion and possible action on Mike Mararity appeal number twelve.
Address of eighteen thirty Eighth Street South.
Um, again, on April eleventh. Twenty twenty-three. The Board of Equalization. Determine the final value. On this property should be a hundred and six thousand three hundred dollars for the land, six hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred for the building. Um, the comparables used and that have been submitted to the county have. Value have not increased in value. I argue that my property should not be assessed at a higher value than comparable properties and should be assessed at. The final value established by the county board on April eleventh, two, twenty twenty-three.
Jacob?
Twenty-four assessment on this property strictly takes it back to what it went out the door in twenty twenty-three before the board's decision changed. Um, the value of one million thirty-six thousand nine hundred is supported by an income value on the property of one million one hundred and two thousand and eighty. Um, based on sixteen units in that building, four being a one-bedroom, two, twelve being two bedrooms. Rents range from six ninety-five to seven twenty-five a month.
Questions from board? Entertaining motion?
I move to approve the, uh, assessment notice of nine hundred and thirty thousand six hundred for the structure, a hundred and six three hundred for the land for a total of. One million thirty-six. Thirty-six thousand nine hundred.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Comments? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item M. Appeal number, Michael Mararity appeal number thirteen.
Eight twenty-nine Park Avenue.
Eight twenty-nine Park Avenue is a sixteen-unit apartment building. It has comparable properties in the area. Uh, the comparable properties were used to establish the value and on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. County Board of Equalization found that the comparable property value to be a hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars. For the land, six hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred dollars for the, the building. No other properties in Brookings. Uh, no other apartment properties in Brookings. Uh, went up in value from twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, based on South Dakota state law that all properties have to be. Assessed equally and equitably. And the fact that this property would be, is being assessed higher than a comparable property. I request that, uh. Uh, twenty twenty-three, um, board's decision be honored.
Okay. Jacob, what do you have here?
Yeah, this, this property here, um, the assessment value went out at one million one hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred, which is. Supported by the sixteen units on site, four being one-bedroom, twelve being two-bedrooms, rents ranging from eight twenty-five to nine twenty-five a month. Which gives us an income value on that property of one million three hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred.
Okay. Any questions here? Entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the assessors' recommendation. Structures one million twenty-three thousand, land one thirty-four two hundred for a total of. One million one fifty-seven two hundred.
Second.
Then a motion in a second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Bartley? Krogman?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item N. Michael Mararity appeal number fourteen.
Eight thirty-nine Park Avenue.
Okay, on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. County Board of Equalization. Set the final value of this property at a hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred for the land, seven hundred thousand two hundred for the property. Um, comparables have been submitted to the county. And were submitted to the county for determinate, determination. State law says that. This property cannot be valued higher than comparables. Comparables that were used in determining the final value did not increase in value from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. This property's, uh, tax assessed value did. Um, resulting in this property being assessed at a higher value than the comparables. Therefore, I ask that you honor the. Um, the board's April eleventh, twenty twenty-three final valuation at a hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred for the land, seven hundred thousand two hundred for the, the building.
Yeah, thank you. Jacob?
Assessment on this property went out at one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred. Uh, there's sixteen units on site, four being one-bedroom, twelve being two-bedrooms, rents again range from eight twenty-five to nine twenty-five a month. Which gives us an income value on that property of one million three hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred. Supporting our assessment.
Okay. Any other comments? Entertaining motion?
I move to approve to accept the assessment notice going out the door at one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley? Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item. Number ten. Approval of corrections.
Do we want to handle these individually?
Yeah, I think we better.
Okay.
Uh, item A, action approve a correction to Daryl Clanjan, RLT. Parcel number. One zero 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 dash one zero nine five two dash one zero four dash ten. I have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
A motion in a second. Comments?
This correction pertains to an eighty-acre tract that's on the east side of Lake Sinai. Prior to this assessment. Um, we, we're assessing the land on the productivity method, basically the soils that are there and what their highest and best use is and how productive they are. Um, we've adjusted at one point in time for the amount of soils that are underwater, under Lake Sinai. Um, what we're doing now is just taking that adjustment a little bit further by taking another six acres. That are essentially untillable at this point and we're adjusting them by fifty-seven percent, which gets the crop top dollar. Down to the grass top dollar because those crop soils cannot be cropped.
Okay, any question or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. Item B, action approve a correction to SND LLC. Parcel number four zero five nine five dash zero zero two zero zero dash zero zero three dash zero zero. I have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
A motion in a second. Comments?
You probably know this property better, um, by the Wilbert Square Event Center on the north end of that property. Um, the, the correction following this one also is the other half of that property in the south end, but what we've done is. Um, applied a twenty-five percent economic obsolescence to the property. Um, decreased revenue was reflected in the income method of assessment to support the value reduction. We will review this and the next property again for the twenty twenty-five assessment.
Okay, any question or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. Item C, action approve a correction to SND LLC. Parcel number four zero five nine five dash zero zero two zero zero dash zero three, zero zero three dash zero five. I have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
A motion in a second. Comments?
Like I said, just the south half of this property that encompasses the hotel. Um, applied a twenty-five percent economic obsolescence because of decreased revenue reflected in the income method of assessment. We will review this again for the twenty twenty-five assessment.
Questions?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. Item D, action approve a correction to Brookings Prairie View Apartment LLC. Parcel number four zero three eight one dash zero one two zero zero dash zero zero one dash zero zero. I have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
A motion in a second. Comments?
Uh, this property and the one following this for correction are the two properties in town that fall under codified law ten six one fifty-seven, I believe. They're both, uh, low-income housing tax credit properties. So the equalization office must value those properties. Based on the restricted incomes only and not look at the tax credits taken upfront to construct or fund the property. Um, so we're following state law by making these value corrections or recommendations to the board for corrections.
Any other questions, Jacob? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. Item E. Action approve a correction to Brookings Edgebrook Apartment LLC. Parcel number four zero five eight two dash zero zero five zero zero dash zero 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 dash zero zero. I have a motion to approve.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Comments?
Again, simply correcting the value to follow state law regarding low-income housing tax credit properties. Um, we have updated profit and loss statements from the company and have made value adjustments accordingly.
No questions?
Just real quick on all, all these, these are corrections that you were there and they accepted those corrections.
Yes, we've agreed before the board hearing. They don't have to be present for the appeal. Um, it's just something that we found after assessment notices went out the door. Actually, we were provided the profit and loss statements about a week after the assessments left, so we're making the corrections based on that information.
All right, that, that's kind of what I thought.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. Item F. Action approve a correction to Robert Cheatham. Executive Trust Parcel Number one four one zero eight dash one 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 five one dash zero seven three. one four one zero eight dash one 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 five one dash zero seven three dash four six. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion of second, any comments?
Um, I think, I believe that was something that was corrected last year.
That's what I thought.
I don't see that on my agenda.
Item F.
Yeah, it's there, but I don't, the corrections is, it's not on the packet.
Okay.
But I don't know what.
Action was already taken in twenty twenty-three, no further action required.
Alrighty, thank you. Moving on, item number eleven, presentation of the twenty twenty-four assessment of real property and building permit information.
I'm going to present the board with a lot of information here, and if at any point in time there's a question or a comment, feel free to interject. Um, I present this to the board every year just as kind of a, this is a close to our assessment year. Um, in comparison to where we ended in twenty twenty-three and where we arrived in twenty twenty-four as far as our assessments are value change due to reappraisal, which is um anything that's done according to trending market um or value that may be added as new construction, but currently within a TIF district, that's classified as reappraisal, but also listed separately on the form. Um, and then the amount of growth, which is new construction, um properties that are changing in tax class are considered growth, um things of that nature, so you can see on the twenty twenty-three abstract, we ended just under uh four billion dollars in total value. Now, these values are before the taxable factor is applied. Um, we had just about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in uh reappraisal value added. We had uh just under seventy-four million dollars in allowable growth countywide. So our twenty twenty-four abstract total unfactored, we ended at uh four billion, one hundred and seventy-six million, six twenty-five, six oh two. You can see the line below that, how much value we had in twenty twenty-three um within TIF district boundaries, how much reappraisal value was added within those boundaries. Of course, there's no allowable growth within a TIF district until that TIF district dissolves and where we ended for the twenty twenty-four abstract total. Um, you can see in comparison to years prior, moving down into the bold, that um our growth was just under one point nine percent. And that that number typically hangs between one and two percent, and the reason being is because the tax base continues to grow with reappraisal. Um, so the amount of growth added every year, even though that tends to increase every year too, in comparison to the total tax base, the percentage stays relatively the same. One thing I will note is uh this year for twenty twenty-four's assessment, we had two TIF districts within the county boundaries that dissolved. Uh, I believe both of those TIF districts were in the city of Volga, one being Sunrise Development and then the other one um being the East Edmund Development Properties. Uh, so we had just just under twelve million dollars in added growth there just for those two TIF districts dissolving. You can see down towards the bottom of that page, um all of the parcels involved in the different exemptions that are offered for various reasons on the tax assessment. Um, an ag building exemption for anybody listening or for the board's information is is new construction on ag buildings. If they value over ten thousand dollars within our system, we automatically apply the discretionary formula. Excuse me, I skipped a line. The ag building exemption is for any property that is occupied by um the owner or relative to the third degree. The first ten thousand dollars worth of ag buildings is exempt from taxation. Discretionary formula, as I was mentioning, pertains to any ag building that's new construction valued over ten thousand dollars. Any commercial, industrial, or residential, commercial being apartment property, um that's new construction that values over thirty thousand dollars. Um, any uh platted lot for developments that are platted in groups of five or more. Those values at full and true are added to the tax rolls in either twenty percent increments for the ag buildings, the commercial structures or the lots, and in the apartment, um discretionary formula, of course, we rewrote that, so it's twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, fifty fifty, seventy-five, seventy-five, a hundred, being a seven-year cycle there. Uh, we have eighty-nine disabled veterans on exemption for a total exempt amount of just under twelve million dollars. Renewable resource energy credit, this is for mainly geothermal systems, and we're seeing less and less of these on the record as the years go by, but we still have six hanging out there with ninety-seven thousand, four hundred exempt from taxation. Partially taxed properties are are just that, they're used partially for tax exempt purposes and qualify as such, and they're used partially for non-tax exempt um reasons, so we have twelve properties that are involved in that uh type of exemption for just under two million dollars of of value exempt from taxation. Historical tax moratorium um is properties that are being renovated and in historic districts or on historic register with the state of South Dakota. Um, their renovations have all been approved through the Historic Society. Um, they give us a very detailed report after construction or during construction of all of the the value added to the property that pertains to that historic tax moratorium. So we take that value added due to that renovation and we exempt it from taxation for a period of seven years. Um, we have a total of two properties, but one property has uh two tax moratoriums going simultaneously. They were partway through construction in one year for for the assessment, and then they finished up construction for the second year. We have nine hundred and sixty-five parcels within TIF district boundaries and, you know, that that number fluctuates as TIF districts dissolve and more TIF districts are created. Um, we have a total of two hundred and sixty-five million dollars of value um within TIF districts. Now, that's, it's listed under the exemption amount, and that's not because those properties are exempt from taxation. It's it's due to the fact that it's reported differently on abstract purposes to departmental revenue. Eighty-six parcels on elderly freeze, um if you're s- over sixty-five or you're disabled, um and you qualify based on income requirements. Um, the property value is frozen back to the year you became disabled or the year that you turned sixty-five. More than likely, that property value is less than the current value of that property. Um, so we have eighty-six people that have qualified for that type of reduction, and we're exempting um just over five million dollars of value from that. We had one business incubator, um being the BE DC owned a building on the southeast corner of Brookings out in the industrial park. And um the terms of that law relate to the period of time in which they can be exempt from taxation due to being an incubator business. Um, they have the same tenant that's been in the property for over five years, and if it's one single tenant, that period expires at the end of the fifth year, so that property is now taxable. So you can see we have, you know, over twenty-two hundred parcels that are involved in some sort of property value exemption um for a total of three hundred and thirty-one million dollars in exemptions. Moving on to the building permit information page. This is just kind of neat to see because, I mean, we all drive around throughout the county and specifically in Brookings City and can see, you know, the rate at which it's growing. Um, but building permit numbers issued in the city this year were actually down a couple hundred, and I would credit that to the fact that we had a derecho storm where people were coming in and getting building permits to replace or repair several things. So that number might be skewed a little bit. New house permits, um we had similar numbers from twenty twenty-three, we only had a one less new building permit issued for uh new construction homes. Hundred and fourteen of them specifically, sixty-seven in Brookings City, fifteen in our small communities, and thirty-two new homes built out in the townships. You can see at the bottom of that page how our parcel count continues to grow with these new homes, there's new platted lots, um just a lot of development going on, so you know, over the course of ten years, we've gone up fifteen hundred parcels in that. We're sitting on a stack of of work that can be processed as soon as we get done with the board's today to move on to next year, so that parcel number will continue to grow. The tentative numbers is just a a simpler version of what was on the first page, the the first page I went through was countywide totals. This is broken down per township, you know, what the value was in twenty twenty-three, how much reappraisal was done within that township, how much growth and the ending twenty twenty-four value with the percentage of growth in relation to where we started. One thing that I would note here is it looks like we've done a lot of reappraisal out in the townships and increased value substantially. Ninety-five percent of that value increase is due to the productivity land values. Uh, the top dollar for crop went up eight percent between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four's value. Seventy-five percent of the soils within Brookings County boundaries are highest and best used for crop. That's where a lot of that value comes from. Um, the grass top dollar went up one and a half percent. Next page just shows the breakdown of the same information, but in all the small communities within Brookings City boundaries, uh Brookings County boundaries, also including Brookings City. Um, in any, any, any town that has a TIF uh district within, those numbers are reported separately on the line below. Um, if you look specifically in Volga, you can see there's a red number there that probably catches your attention, that's nothing to be worried about. Um, what happened there is, like I said, we had just under twelve million dollars of assessed value in twenty twenty-three that was within a TIF district or two TIF districts. Those districts then dissolved, so that number becomes growth over on the right and comes out of the reappraisal for that, for the TIF boundary, so it looks like we lost a lot of value, but it just shifted out of the TIF district and into the normal taxing district. Next page is the same information, but broken down by the school districts within the county boundaries. Again, highlighting that the Sioux Valley School District did not lose a bunch of value. Um, five million dollars shifted from TIF boundaries to outside TIF boundaries because of two dissolutions. That's why you see an abnormally high percentage there in the Sioux Valley percent growth too. I mean, they're just about three percent growth, and normally we hang around that one and a half to two percent. Are there any questions on this information up to this point?
Number thirteen, uh renewable resource tax credits?
As I mentioned, these properties are becoming less and less, uh this this type of exemption is is nothing that is applied for by the homeowner. If we're out doing appraisals on new construction properties or reappraisals on existing and and they have installed some sort of renewable energy, um eating and cooling system, we'll take the value of that system that's added in our uh KAMA system for cost, and we'll take that and exempt it from property taxes for a period of four years. It's an automatic on and automatic cycle off type of exemption.
Okay. Move on to item number fourteen, action approve new applications for tax exempt status.
These applications are properties that have been acquired within the past year by a tax exempt entity or the use has changed to allow for a tax exemption to be approved. Um, what I've done before the board today is I've, I'm required to um do my own investigation to make sure that the property is being used for um specifically for tax exempt reasons and owned by a tax exempt entity and have those entities apply for set exemptions. Um, I would recommend approval on all of these new applications for tax exempt status.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion of second. Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Item number fifteen, action to approve tax exempt status exemptions.
This here is a list of all the properties that continue to receive a tax exemption due to the the nature of the use of their property and their um, you know, their tax exempt status with the IRS as well. Um, this list is published by law, I believe it's the third week in March um in all the local papers relating to, you know, religious, education, charitable, or benevolent exemptions.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion of second, this has all been reviewed and checked over.
Yep, these applications are uh applied for on an annual basis, and the investigations are done as of November first.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, action to approve owner occupied status applications.
Uh, this list here is um the number of applicants that we've had for owner occupied status, and the reason the list is fairly long is because the assessment notices are due to be sent out to property owners by law, March first every year. Um, we usually try to send them out as as early as we have them done. This year, they went out February fourteenth. Um, the deadline for applying for owner occupied status happens to be March fifteenth, so we have a month gap in there where we're still receiving applications and they're they're eligible for that exemption for the current assessment. We've done our our investigations on both the top part of the list where we're adding owner occupied and then the two on the bottom where we're removing. Um, those those uh property owners have actually applied in other counties in South Dakota, and those counties have notified Brookings County of such.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carried. Item seventeen, action to approve the twenty twenty-four riparian buffer strip classification applications.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any comments?
If you guys remember on the riparian buffer strip, the legislation changed so that uh the value reduction would go from forty percent on the value of the land within a certain footage of, you know, protection of water. Um, and then the the application is actually good for a ten-year window now, so we don't have any new applications for twenty twenty-four. We're just carrying forward those applications from the prior year.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carried. Item eighteen, action approve disabled veterans exemptions.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion of second, comments?
For privacy reasons, the names have been redacted, but the addresses and parcel number of the property um where the homeowner or surviving spouse of the homeowner qualifies for the disabled veterans exemption. In order to qualify for this exemption, you must apply with our office, and you must be rated as permanent and total disability from service connection through the VA. Prior requirements, um you must be a hundred percent permanent in total, they have gone away with the percentage. You can be somewhere south of a hundred percent rated, but you can still be deemed as permanent in total, so those individuals um that meet those requirements qualify for up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar value exemption from taxation. Um, we've listed there, you know, the total value of the property and the amount of the exemption being a hundred and fifty, if it's, if the total value is over that. Um, for twenty twenty-four, it's a hundred and fifty, and actually for next year's assessment, the legislation has increased that exemption, excuse me, to two hundred thousand.
Okay, any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carried. Item nineteen, action to approve a tax moratorium exemptions.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion of second.
As I mentioned earlier, um these properties have been renovated and maintaining um their historic integrity. Um, so the value added to the property because of the renovations is exempt from taxation through the tax moratorium for a period of seven years.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carried. Item twenty, action approve partially taxed exemptions.
So moved.
Motion of the second?
These properties, like I said earlier too, are uh being used partially for tax exempt purposes and partially for non-exempt purposes. We've applied a percentage based on their own application on an annual basis of how much of that property is being used for each purpose, and we've applied that percentage to the full and true assessed value to arrive at the exempt amount you see there on the right.
Okay. Any further comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carried. Item twenty-one, action approve discretionary formula exemptions. Item twenty-one, action approve discretionary formula exemptions.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion of the second?
It's a list of every property in Brookings County that qualifies for discretionary formula exemption based on the reasons stated earlier, whether it's commercial, industri- excuse me, industrial and values over thirty thousand in our system, an egg building that's new construction valuing over ten thousand, or newly platted lots, platted in groups of five or more, um, receive a reduction in the percentage you see. You know, if you're just looking at line one, you can see the total value of the property, the amount of value subject to the exemption, and then the percentage of, of the, the property being factored there on the right. Those automatically cycle through our tax system. I mean, we have to enter them in year one when they're discovered or new construction is complete, and then they cycle through, and growth is added every year based on the percentage increase in taxable value.
Alrighty. Any questions for Jacob? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carried. Item twenty-two, action approve elderly tax freeze exemptions.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion of the second. Comments?
These are all the properties where the owners qualify for that, uh, elderly or disabled freeze, as I mentioned. You can see in the third to last column what the twenty twenty-four assessment was on the property, and then based on whatever the, the year the owner turned sixty-five or the year they came disabled, um, you can freeze the value anywhere from a twenty twenty-three assessment going back to, you know, the early two thousands. And you can see the amount of value, um, the loss column represents the amount of value that's exempt from taxation uh, due to the elderly or disabled tax freeze. This is an annual application as well, so the Brookings County Finance Office actually does most of the work for us and, and goes through the income on the individual applying and either approves or denies that, and then sends it up to us for the value a- adjustments.
Okay. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carried. Item twenty-three. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion of the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. We adjourned.
Thank you, board.